Thank you.
Okay, good evening and welcome to the Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen's Meeting for July 18th, 2017. May we have a roll call, please?
President, Selectman Tropiano, Selectman Whiteside, Selectman Slavin, Selectman Titlebaum, and Town Council Rich Bowen.
Pledge of Allegiance, let's see, Cat Jones.
You said you were busy.
............................................................
Okay, next up we have announcements. I'll start off with an announcement and an explanation as to why Selectman Scasiotti's not here tonight. His father passed away this morning at the age of 94, which the gentleman just turned yesterday. He'd been in the hospital and made it to his last birthday and then said goodbye to his family today. I spoke with Tony for a while on the phone. Mr. Scasiotti was a very interesting fellow. He actually worked on satellite warfare in the 1960s. He was an engineer and worked for a number of different companies, including Lockheed Martin, did a lot of things in his life. And so, out of respect to Selectman Scasiotti, I'd like to have a moment of silence for Thank you. Now I'll get back to the regular announcements. Anything?
I don't have anything to announce, really. Well...
Is something on your mind?
Well...
No.
There's a lot on my mind, trust me. You know, we got the thing going, we're gonna, we're setting up a meeting, I just wanted you to know. Is that on the agenda? Let me make sure it's not on here. It's not on here. Selectmen's things, no it's not, so I'll use this time. And we are gonna have a meeting with the two districts and we are gonna finalize the, an agreement for the water rates, to get the water and sewer numbers. So, just so you know, it's in the process. I talked to Derek, we're gonna have a meeting together, like a private meeting, then we'll bring everybody in after we sort of got an agreement together. But it looks like it's gonna go forward. Yay, thank God. And a matter of fact, I got a letter from somebody today, this poor little old lady who says, "Yeah, you know, I'm paying a lot of money for, for nothing," you know? So, this'll be a good thing for everybody, I think, in the end result, once it gets all finished. It's a long time coming, so...
Great.
Just want everybody to know that that's happening.
Great, thanks for getting back on with that, after Alan and I ran into the ditch.
We had approval at the time.
Actually, we were okay. Somebody else ran into the ditch, but we'll take...
Yeah, someone did, but we'll not explain it though.
We'll leave it at that.
I don't wanna explain it.
Agent 666. Selectman Whiteside?
Yes. Couple of things. The CORE, which is the group trying to raise funds to rebuild Lopes Playground, has pictures, postcards, and writing cards available at the Onset Bay Association, Gallery Consignment, Cup of the Bay, and Spinney Library. We thank, they thank everyone who is selling pictures of onset. They're fabulous pictures and hopefully they're going really quickly. For those of you who keep moaning and groaning about trash, the Big Bellies are on their way. There are a couple of people in town who think that it will take only one week for someone to figure out how to smash the solar energy panels so that they don't work. I hope that those individuals are wrong. There is absolutely no excuse, none, for there to be trash on the road, on the beaches, on the sidewalks, on the sides of the road, in any of the parks or playgrounds. If you use them, pick your stuff up and take it home with you. That's what your mummy told you, that's what your grandmother told you, and your grandfather probably would've smacked you upside the head if he didn't do it.
That's what your teacher's telling you.
Yeah. And then, on a, an exciting note, this weekend, the Cape Cod League All-Star Game is being played at Spillane Field, basically all day Saturday. There will be a home run hitting derby. Six of the players from the Gaitman team made the All-Star Team, including three pitchers. Some of the former Gaitman who played here are current and former major league players. So, it's, I'm not sure what they're gonna be charging for admission, but even if it's five bucks, it's the best five bucks you'll ever see. You don't have to go to Fenway, you don't have to worry about parking, you know, it's a great, great family opportunity. That's it.
Is it?
Well, I'll probably think of something else, but...
Sure.
No, yeah, I am sure that I will, but go ahead.
You got anything?
You good?
I'm...
Well, now she is.
I'm fine.
We'll wait for the interruption. Go ahead.
Okay. Just let me know when. Okay, we have the Swan Festival on the 29th, which is about a week and a half away, downtown Wareham, Murchison's Way.
Yeah, the AC is kinda creating a lot of ambient noise.
It's got little bugs on the end of it. Just to let everybody know that the governor did his budget after vetoing the House and Senate budget, which we expected. The cut was not as severe as I expected. It was $320 million. Mostly the money for the schools and for the general fund for the cities and towns were more or less kept intact. There's a lot of periphery programs that have been pretty well cut. We'll hope that there won't be any 9C cuts sometime in the middle of this particular year, probably in November or so. Federal government normally will then present their budget and then we'll find out what's really going on. I happen to be, have a meeting today in Gatra on the state level, they lost $80,000 in their bus program so far. So, we'll see how that goes. But the really good news is that, I have to give a lot of credit to our representative, Susan Williams-Gifford. It's great that she's a Republican and we have a Republican governor, because the governor left $25,000 for the wall in the budget. We expected there's a good chance it would get cut. It was not cut, so that makes for a big difference for the actual event and how it's gonna work. So, we should, everybody, when they have a chance, should thank her very much, because she was instrumental in getting that done. Blues Festival is August 5th. My wife, Sandy, and I will be working at the front gates, so show up and buy tickets. Cape Verdean Festival is a week later, that's August 12th. And as Judy mentioned, the Big Belly Trash Barrels are virtually here, they're, I think they're actually over in Minnesota Main, it's getting taken care of. And unfortunately, Derek's not here, else Peter, myself, and Patrick and Derek could display what a Big Belly looks like.
Speak for yourself.
Thank you. And that's it for today.
Okay, I just have one more thing. On August 26th, at the Tremont Nail Factory in the Long Low Building by the water, is the Meet Me at the Tremont Event. It's being sponsored by the town. The chief sponsor is the Cape Cod Canal Region Chamber of Commerce, Eastern Bank, South Coast, Lindsay's, there's gonna, a bunch of sponsors, Cape Cod Five, who else? Did I say South Coast? Whole bunch of people. Anyway, yeah, I'll get those after I do this. There's a cash bar, hors d'oeuvres, and, they're calling it a light buffet, but the items look a little heavier than that, so you might be able to get a full meal out of it without too much trouble. Entertainment by Cranberry Coast, and there's going to be artwork presented by the Born Wareham and also the Sandwich Art Associations, along with a judging card, so you can pick your favorite painting. All of this can be had for $35, and it runs from 5:30 PM till 8:30 PM on August 26th. So, the town and the chamber and the people involved in sponsoring this, including the Tremont Nail Advisory Group, which is Roseberry from Eastern Bank, Tracy Maderos from the Gallery Consignment Shop, and also Maria Oliva from the Cape Cod Canal Region Chamber. Look forward to seeing you all out there. A couple more here, there's the Meat Raffle, Peer View Restaurant, Sunday, July 23rd at 2017. Let's see, 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM. There's a Steak Lover's Basket, a Seafood Basket, a Barbecue Basket, he'll be bidding on that one, Chicken Basket, Ham Basket, and Picnic Basket.
Ham Basket's kosher.
And again, that's... What?
No.
Sorry.
Yeah, we were talking about the Jewish holidays earlier, he's starting to get religion for the next couple of months. That will be from, on Sunday, July 23rd, 2017, from 3:00 to 5:00. On August 27th, 2017, the Chalk Full of Fun Street Painting Festival, let's see, where does this take place?
Onset.
There you go.
..........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
No, we remember you well, Paul.
I'm here to advocate for the Back Beach, for the Glencoe Beach, for the East River Beach, whatever name you would like to call it, because there are a number of names now which have been attributed to it for about the 10th time. And I can't believe I'm reading this without my glasses. I am probably, along with others, taking exception to some of the comments which were made recently in the article that was in the local paper. One of the comments made was, and I believe by Town Administrator Mr. Sullivan, that the East River Beach, or the Back Beach, to we younger people, as it is known, is not one of the best bathing beaches around. We're not trying to be in competition with the Front Beach, the Main Beach, the Onset Beach, whatever name you wanna call it. We have just been advocating for someone to come and help us to clear up a little bit of what this drain, storm drain has been causing. As yet, nothing has been done. The Back Beach may not be important to you people, but for we taxpayers and residents who have been, it has been the best beach for us for the past 60 or 70 years. Our families have enjoyed that beach for years, before the 50s, for the 50 years. My grandchildren and most of all, my great-grandchildren recently enjoyed it over the 4th of July, and I'd like to see them continue to be able to enjoy it. In the time of that 50 years or so, the town has slowly taken away our beach. For whatever reason, we are still not understanding it. The town, in its infinite wisdom, decided to put in a boat ramp. I believe it was in 1972, Paul? I'm not sure.
Thereabouts.
It was done with much opposition to the local residents, and it was accomplished when none of the local taxpayers were around to see that the work was done properly. The project took away much of what was a very pristine and very lush beach with a lot of eel grass. The town has at various times since then, 1985, and most recently, has attempted to engage, enlarge the boat ramp. One has to wonder what the motives, what motives lie behind it and...
State.
Because it is really not a very lucrative adventure or venture to the town of Wareham. Boaters usually come to Onset, put their boats in the water, do their boating, return to the beach, pull their trailers out, and then most of them leave. Little money, if at all, is spent in the town of Onset. In 1972, when the bay was dredged, and in some subsequent years, when the bay was dredged again, especially the East River Beach in the bay, the area, the Back Beach, was supposed to have been the recipient of some of the dug-up sand. We never received any of the sand that was promised to us. One has to wonder why. Some of the beaches, some of the beaches such as in Riverside, the beaches in Onset Beach, they all received sand, but we did not. I'm sure there's some kind of a reason for it, but it's never been explained to us. That sand was promised to us, but it was never get, we never received it. Recently, there was a drainage issue in the trailer park. I think there were two issues that were involved with that, and I don't recollect the subsequent events, but in one of the processes, there was an eight-by-10, no, not the pipe, the... Come on, dummy.
If I could just jump in here, I can tell you that the trailer park issue has been resolved, and it no longer drains through there.
I understand that.
Okay.
I was gonna allude to that a little bit later.
Yep.
But there was a big dry well down there. I went to the beach one day and I said, "My God, somebody's gonna fall in here and get hurt, and the town's gonna be liable for a suit." So, I came to the board again and presented them with the problem. They said, "Okay, we will take care of it, we'll put bushes around it, whatever, to prevent anyone from falling." I came back in the spring, nothing had been done. I came to the board again, explained the problem to them, again, telling them that it's a suit waiting to happen. Within two days, that board had the hole filled in, sanded, grassed over, and if the problem was taken care of. My point being, if the town wants to act, they can act very quickly and they can do very well. And we're hoping that we'll, something will be done with, with our beach sometime soon. I'm losing my place here, but...
Recently, there was a drain.
Pardon? Right. The drain issues, we've heard that the drain issues have been resolved. The pipes that were put in there really have never been worked. My concern is that when the process, the project was first started, I was very curious as to what was going to happen. When they told me that there was a drain pipe going to go in there, I asked them, one of the engineers supervisors, where was the pipe going to go? They told me the pipe was going to go between the boat ramp and between the sandbar, which is off to the right, at a 45-degree angle. The next morning, when I walked to the beach, the pipe was in the swimming area, which was very disappointing. And as you can see, it dumps rainwater in there, it dumps oils from the road, it's not, it is a problem. Mr. Sullivan said that the waters, it has been treated, if it has been treated, it's really not doing a very good job.
My understanding is, is the case with all new installations for drainage, that there is an oil separator in the drain.
We have to meet the remediation standard now.
Right, we have to meet the federal MS4 standards.
Pretreatment.
So, it is actually pretreated, it's just a flotation, I'm not sure if the, actually you could probably speak to that better than I could.
You should ask the question of why the pipe would be laid into the beach area, if it was supposed to go near the dock area, that, that's a question we should ask, anyway.
That's a question we can ask, but I can tell you that drainage pipes have been an issue, not just on your beach, but beaches all over town. When I was a kid, at Tempest Snob, we had the pipe draining the parking lot, running about maybe 30 feet away from the pier, right next to the swimming area. And everybody's mother said, "Stay away from that thing, it's rusty, you're gonna cut yourself." It's still there, it's still rusty, you can still cut yourself.
It's one on...
So, nothing changes. Swiss Beach has one, so you're not alone in the drainage pipe department, I can tell you that.
Well, it's not the drainage pipe, it's the fact it's going into our swimming area.
Oh, they all do, unfortunately. That's where the roads are.
But it was supposed to go in the boat channel.
It's almost as if they went out of their way to route this pipe. It's a longer distance to get out to the swimming area than it would've been to go over by the boat ramp.
It's a question we can ask.
Yeah.
We'll ask and try to get you an answer for that.
Well, thank you. I think we'd appreciate that very much.
With regards to boat ramps generally, I grew up and still live in front of one. Be glad you're not, be glad you don't live near mine, it's the biggest one in town. And it's open 24/7 because we took state money to fix it, and at 3:30 in the morning during bath season, I'm treated to loud people waking up my dog, who then wakes me up to, so she can go investigate, so...
I can appreciate that, thank you. Thank you. Question from my beautiful wife, "Is there a chance that we could cover the beach over with sand ourself?" We have tried to maintain the beach, we have had working parties down there, it's not that we haven't tried to do it as well. And I think when the new Department of Public Works gentleman took over, I had talked to him, and he said he would come and try to do something with the beach. Thank goodness he did, he kept his word. Unfortunately, he kept, he came when the tide was at mid-tide, and he had a machine that just wasn't fit to do the beach. What it needs is hand-raking.
Gift? There's, well, in thinking about it, I suppose it's possible for this board to accept gifts. However, you're operating in an area where you would need a notice of intent from Conservation and have to go before them and everything else, so it's a little more than us just saying, "Sure, show up with your wheelbarrows."
We don't have any answer for that.
It's also understand, misunderstood to me, is that there were various plans to enlarge the boat ramp a few years back, and I was very upset with that plan. And I never saw the plans, but someone that is a resident there did. And I never saw the plans, but someone that is a resident there did. They were going to put in a double boat ramp, they were going to enlarge the channel, they were going to take the environmentally protected grassy area, macadam it over, and put parking area in there for boats and cars. That was, that was one of the plans that we had heard about. And I can't understand why they would want to destroy the area in that manner, because it is, as far as we're concerned...
Well, that never happened.
Yeah. Selectman Whiteside?
This area.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm going to guess that the reason that the sand didn't get to your beach in whatever year that was, is that no barge can go underneath the bridge that it would take to get to that beach.
Okay.
Okay, that's my guess. It's an uneducated guess, but it's my best guess. But I would be happy to meet with you, not right now, but to, you know, to go over the information that you have and then do some research and work with you, the municipal maintenance director and the town administrator, as well as the conservation agent, to see what we can do for you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Probably the most advanced we have ever had, and I appreciate that very much.
Doesn't mean I'm going to get anywhere.
Probably not.
The sand is across the bay.
The sand went to Riverside.
Oh, it did?
Yes, and it went across the other side of the bay as well. But not our, but we didn't need a barge.
If you will leave your information, your contact information on a piece of paper for me, then I'd be happy to get ahold of you and...
All right, we know how to get ahold of Paul.
Yeah, well, I don't.
You will.
Thank you. I'm going to close very quickly here, so please be patient. Mr. Sullivan says that he understands the frustration that we have. I will say to Mr. Sullivan that that's the biggest gross misunderstanding of the year. No one can understand the frustration that we have had for the last eight or 10 years. And with that, I will close and I will say, "You are rid of me forever. This is my last appearance." But I thank you for your patience, I thank you for your listening, and I'm hoping that something will bear fruit and something will be able to get done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
If I could just have a moment with the board. My name is Paul Albertine. I live at 22 11th Street. And like Paul, my great-grandfather owned the Bayview Inn, so we're cousins.
Okay.
So...
He won't admit it, but he...
So I'm likely to take over where he left off.
Okay.
But, you know, I grew up and spent all, you know, my summers down at that same beach. You know, it was a lovely beach 58 years ago, the best I can remember.
It was.
And over the years, it's continued to deteriorate. My kids played there, you know, 30 years ago was still pretty nice, but, you know, now, you know, I've got grandchildren and, you know, with that storm drain there, it's, I still like to take them down there, but it's not the same beach I remember from being a kid, so...
Many of them aren't. But thank you for coming in. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time and listening to us.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So anybody else would like to speak to the board tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll skip over the appointment, because we've got other people here for other business, we'll come back to that.
Where's the missus?
Let's go to the continued hearing on the application for an alteration of premises and change of location.
Can we just get the one-day, like, license out of here?
Yeah.
Oh, the one-day?
Yeah.
Oh. Okay.
The application for onset bay.
Yeah, because that's probably going to take less time. Why don't you come on up?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll take care of that first. And the second-hand renewal, then we'll go to the, to these guys.
Yeah, if that's okay.
Yep.
I've already gone through all the paperwork, everything's in place. This is just the same basic as last year.
Yes.
In this particular case here, I will give this to Mrs. Whiteside to read. I am a member of this particular organization that does this event, and I actually work it, so I think it's in progress.
Get paid?
I don't get paid, but it doesn't matter.
Then it's no big deal.
Yeah, it does.
Cheap.
None of us get paid.
Cheap, cheap, cheap.
As much as we do.
Is this that beer thing they pull up and set up and all that? Yeah, from last time.
I move that the town of Wareham approve a special license to the Onset Bay Association for Union Avenue Post Office Box 799, onset Mass. 02558, for August 5, 2017, from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM. The premises will be Prospect Park, Lilian Gregor Men Banshell, to be contained in a beer garden, which will have fencing around it. The licenses for sale of beer and wine and the licensed activity or enterprise is nonprofit. That's my motion. It is a fundraiser...
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yeah.
Second?
Oh, second, sorry.
Okay, motion made by Selectman Whiteside, seconded by Selectman Tropiano. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain.
Abstain.
Okay, it's 3-0-1. Clerk Slavin abstaining, you're all set. It'll be ready for you tomorrow in the office.
Thank you so much.
And good luck this year.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. You go.
Okay, next up, you know, why don't we get the, why don't we continue the hearing? They've been waiting patiently. Continued hearing on the application for an alteration of premises and change of location of a year-round retail package goods store, all alcoholic beverages, license to Patriot Spirits, Inc., DBA Liquor &amp; More, 1618 Seth Toby Road, Wareham, under the provisions of Chapter 138 of the general laws. Good evening.
Good evening, members of the board, Chairman.
Just so everybody knows, we closed the public hearing portion the last time, so whatever public input there was, was garnered, which there really wasn't much. And at this point, it's our internal deliberations, I suppose, to ask questions of these gentlemen. Should we have any?
I believe we were informed that there would be information handed out to us this evening, even though it was handed, it was delivered via email.
The only issue we have with that is it probably should have come in during the public hearing, so that the public could have, we could have taken administrative notice of that, and the public should have commented on it, had an opportunity to comment on it. So I'm a little concerned about taking that in at this point in time. If council says we can, we can, but...
But thank you, Mr. Chairman. The documents are fairly straightforward. I mean, some of it is just legal analysis, which you can take in...
Right.
And give the weight that you want.
Right.
I think the other was related to financial obligations, which had been described, which the public was aware, the public was aware of the nature of the document, and what was sent in was just confirmation of what council had represented to you. So I don't see a problem with taking it in.
Okay. If that's the case, then you can, you can hand those up and we'll put those in the record. Alan?
Yeah, one of the documents was supposed to be dropped off at the last meeting, and I think you forgot to give it to us.
Correct, they were referenced and discussed.
They were referenced and discussed.
And never brought up, but I will remedy that now.
Okay, thanks. Okay. See originals, that can go there.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, with respect to the map, you know where the other licenses are, so it's just a chalk for you.
We did see this via the email, so...
Yeah, we already got an email on all of it.
Just want to take the originals and put them in the folder. They're each individual, so you've got to take one of each.
Yeah. Go ahead, just take one of each.
Okay, I'll open it up for discussion. Selectman Tropiano?
I want to see what we have here.
Okay.
Prepare the statement for this, if you want.
You did?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
I read this earlier.
Okay. I'm just going to read, put some thoughts together today, so we go over all this, at least on my point of view. When this request first came before the board, as everybody knows, I had several concerns. At the time, there was not much mentioned either way. The concerns that I had were justified at the end. I was concerned about Makepeace, whether there was a release on the lease, which we have the paperwork now. Also, about the ABCC response to a change of license holder and a move location while still in the old location and still operating. The Makepeace issue as far as the license, et cetera, and the ability to terminate the lease has been taken care of. ABCC has kind of answered the question, but their answer was kind of a little bit iffy. They would rather delay on the move portion, but we could still, said we could do it if we wanted to. Patrick, Mr. Tropiano had mentioned that as a licensing board, we can do whatever we want. Town council was asked the question, he affirmed that statement. There should have been another question asked at that time, at the same time, though. And that question should be, what is the reason to deny, is it defendable? Just because we can do something doesn't mean it holds water at the end of the day. We function under mass general law, home rule charter, bylaws, zoning bylaws. We also operate under a free enterprise system, which is what this country has been, this economy has been based on from day one. We do have laws on monopolies, price collusion, et cetera, but not competition between local retail outlets. I believe we all have reached out, I believe you all have been reached out to on this particular issue, not to grant this move. It would be easy just to deny it, but is it really the correct decision? In my opinion, it's not the correct legal decision. We have allowed other licenses to move to locations close to existing liquor stores. Wines &amp; More was okayed at the time, several years back in the mall, and there was existing liquor stores, which would be virtually the same distance as we have now. Also, as a very typical example, we allowed Walmart to move, and Walmart located next to a very large mall that we have, and Walmart probably had an adverse effect on some of those stores, but therefore, we still allowed it to happen. I remember years ago, when I opened up a non-franchise motorcycle parts accessory retailer, this goes back, I'm old, in the 60s. At the time, major parts and accessory distributors, which is where most people get their equipment from, only sold to, as stated in the catalogs, franchise motorcycle dealers. In order to function, I needed the distributors' products. I was forced to use the restraint of trade laws, which are federal laws, with the threat of lawsuits. Basically, what happened was, they immediately sold me product, and my actions opened up the industry to all retail businesses. This issue here, for me, smacks more of a restraint of trade than anything else. I would suggest that we approve the transfer of ownership and the change of location, submit the transfer of ownership to the ABCC, but hold the location submittal till a date agreed to by the proponent, with the understanding that when the ABCC approves the location change, the retail operation at Rosebrook location ceases immediately. Thank you.
Selectman Tropiano?
All right, so I, you know, one of the things you do when you're up here, and I try not to listen to the bloggers, because, you know, they hide behind whatever and they say whatever they want to say, and they really don't know, and they don't understand. I try to listen to the information that gets put in, and when I'm asking questions and I say, you know, "I don't think this is an issue," I look for the applicant to give me a reason why it should go there, or why it should be. Something that says to me, you know, "This is, this is good for the town, it's better for the town if it's there than it isn't," and so on and so forth. That's what I look for. And I didn't hear anything like that. All I heard was, you know, "Well, you know, there's, the area's grown up and, you know, it can support it more now," and, you know, that kind of thing. And I kind of got this history of what the side of town looks like, you know, I'm kind of familiar with that, being a selectman and all. And the other thing I heard was, though, "We moved it from where it was to there because we thought it had a need to move it there." And that's not the reason why I moved it. I remember when we moved it specifically, we moved it because we thought that economically it would help develop the Business Overlay District, which, of course, we all want to make sure that it develops well. And that's why we decided to move it there, not from, not, otherwise, we wouldn't have moved it, we would have left it where it was. It's also, by the way, on a different side of the highway. And I think one side of the highway and the other side of the highway, believe it or not, are kind of different in some respect. The other thing is, you know, they say, "Well, you know, we could do more business over there, do whatever." Well, you know, I know some businesses that are on a backyard, hidden in a wood somewhere, and everybody and his brother goes there because they have whatever the product is that they want, or they have, you know, done a good job merchandising, whatever it is, you know? It almost location, you know, if you do a good thing, a good merchandising job, probably don't care where the location is. I think to throw another liquor store on top of the liquor stores that are there, and basically, that's what we're doing, we're putting it on top of them, especially between Anchor, Wines &amp; More, and Peppen, who's just down the street. I mean, I don't think there's half a mile in, where we'd have all those liquor stores in that little circle. Now, sure, is it not that far from where it is now to move it to there? Absolutely not. It's not that far to move it from here to here, but it's a different, it's different to move it in between two other liquor stores, you know what I'm saying? And that kind of bothers me. So on this particular time, I can't see myself supporting this at this time. Maybe something will change down the road and it'll become viable to move it out there, but right now, I don't think it's a viable thing. I absolutely believe that it's within our authority, first off, to not transfer it if we choose not to, and also, I believe it's within our authority to not, not give the license a new location as well. And I think we can use any method of what we think's best for the town. The reason why we're up here is to take in the information and try to make the best decision for the town of Wareham. It doesn't matter who the people are involved or anything like that, we try to do it for what's best for the town, not necessarily what's best for the applicant, or what's best for some particular individual or not. That's what we try to do when we make these decisions. They're difficult decisions, lots of times. And this one, you know, it's, it's a difficult one. You know, you could say, "Yeah, okay, throw it in there, see what happens," you know, whatever. I don't believe that's, I think that's irresponsible, to do that. And I'm not prepared to vote for this application.
Okay. Selectman Whiteside?
Thank you. In my opinion, we actually have two requests in front of us. One of them is to transfer the license to, from one business to another. I have absolutely no problem with that whatsoever. My previous life included 23 years as a commercial bank lender, and I believe, as one of my peers does, that we should not be involved in what might be perceived as restraint of trade. We should be believing that the people who come before us and who apply for something know what they're doing. The question, however, of moving the location, I have read the ABCC letter, which we received several times, and I am not comfortable in having those two things in one motion. Wonderful, transfer the license, take your chances, hope you're successful, but to, I'll call it pocket a license or put it on a table or something for a somewhat specified period of time. It's, the ABCs didn't say, "Yes, that's awesome, let's do it that way." They didn't say that. So when the regulatory authorities of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts don't give it a really nice pat on the head, I'm a little reluctant to go along with that. However, I'm totally in favor of transferring the license.
Yeah, this isn't an easy question. I too have no issue with the transfer of ownership.
No.
I do tend to agree with Patrick on the issue of 195 being a bit of a dividing line. You know, where you live, where you get off the highway, is going to dictate in a lot of instances where you shop. And I, I just think that right now, the area out there is adequately served by the stores that are there. It is within our discretion, as Attorney Bowen advised us, to consider issues such as location, impacts on existing businesses, and so on and so forth. So my inclination would be to support the transfer, but not the premises change. I will ask now for, we are missing a member tonight.
Transfer, by the way.
Excuse me?
I don't have a problem with a transfer.
Okay. On the, on the second question, which would be the premises change, I am going to poll the board, we're missing a member tonight, so if it comes up two to two, then I would wait and give you the courtesy of waiting until that fifth member came to break the tie. So would you support the premises change?
Yes.
The premises change?
No, not the premises change, just look, just...
I'm just asking the premises change.
Not the premises change.
Selectman Whiteside, would you support the premises change?
Could you please define when you are asking us to do that? Do you want us to do it at the same time?
That's tonight, that's what we're here for tonight, is to figure this out.
Can I explain that? Just so you understand.
Lean forward, so they can hear you.
Do you understand this, Whitehead? The premises change is something that we can vote for and hold and not submit to the ABCC...
I understand that.
Until a time specific that they want to do that.
I understand that, but I also read the letter, the information that came from Mr. Scaramone or whatever his name is.
Ralph.
Ralph. And I don't like what I'll call weasely words. It didn't, it didn't say, "Yeah, this is the awesome way of doing it." I don't like doing business that way.
Understand, just so you understand.
I understand, but I'm...
You can do it.
Thank you.
I would vote for both. Each one is a separate motion, but I would definitely vote for both.
Okay. I think at this point, and I'll let you try to sway us. At this point, I don't, I don't think you have the votes for the second part. I will say this, I don't think anyone sitting up here would have an issue should the conditions change out there. If one of the existing stores decided to do something else, then I think there would be a service need over the other side of the highway.
My, my comments are, show me the building, I'll move the license.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Two, two things. One is...
Could you identify yourself?
Sure, Rob Chamberlain, applicant. I know there's some feeling that the status quo can exist there, and I think the evidence has been put in by letter, but the fact of the matter is, the existing store, the status quo is not going to remain. So the, one way or another, something has to happen with that store. The store isn't performing and something is, something is going to change there, one way or the other. So, I mean, this is a controlled way to do it. And with all due respect, to force us to build a building before we can get a view of whether you will move the license to that building, I think is kind of an unfair approach, with all due respect. It's quite a financial commitment to have to proceed to not only buy the license, but buy the land. And as a practical matter, you know, in the financing world, without approval to move the store, there, there isn't going to be financing. So the other option I would put before the board, I mean, we, you know, we thought about where we are, we're all, you know, we're all, in a sense, in a catch-22 here. The other option would be to, if you were of a mind to approve the change of location, would be to simply do that with no conditions. And then, when that was approved by the ABCC, we would, we would simply have to shut the store down at Rosewood during the construction period. So the procedural difficulty we're in here really came about as a result of our desire to try to keep the, the Rosebrook store operational, and that's really when we ran into trouble with the concept of approving both of them simultaneously. But if we're willing to close Rosebrook during the period of construction, which we would be willing to do, I would throw that on the table as a, as a potential option. That really, I think, eliminates any procedural impediment to voting both of those at the same time. They would both go up simultaneously, the ABCC would likely approve it if you did, and we would simply proceed to execute the deal and not operate the store.
Well, let me...
Can we ask... Can we ask? Counsel, could you weigh in on that?
Proposal?
Question?
Did you have a specific question about it?
Could that be done, I think?
Could that be done in the way that Mr. Chamberlain is suggesting? And is it a cleaner way of doing it than what has previously been proposed?
Okay, so-
That's two questions.
The proposal is that the board approve the transfer of ownership and location on, on the condition that the current store close, as of the moment that the ABCC approves of the board's action.
Correct.
Okay. So, that's the proposal. The question is, can you do that? The answer is yes. The question is, is that a cleaner way than approving the transfer of location and putting it in the drawer for nine months? I think the answer to that is yes.
I have one question, though. The ABCC typically looks at the location, there won't be one.
With your permission, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
The Chapter 138, Section 12, I believe, does allow a licensing board to issue a license for a location that is not yet built.
Okay.
I could go into it more, but that's the one.
No, no, that's fine, thank you.
Well, now we're going to have to go back and ask everybody what they think. We know what you think, anyway, you're easy.
Well, I suggest it's exactly where we're at now.
Yeah. Selectman Whitehead, does this change how you would act on this? Because if it does, then it goes from-
Yes.
Three to one opposed on the second, to two to two, and then I have to ask Selectman Tropiano, what do you think?
Yes, it, it-
Okay, so now we're, now we're at two to two.
Yep.
Changed my mind about moving it.
Yeah, I don't think it really changes mine either, so, in fairness, I'm going to continue this until our fifth selectman is here and can weigh in. We don't meet next week, we do meet the following week, which is August 1st. I want you to have, you know, again, I could call for a vote tonight, it would fail two to two, and that's not going to, I don't think that's fair to you guys, you've put a lot of work into this. And who knows? Maybe one of us could get hit on the head in the meantime and change our vote, too. But anyway, I think that's really the fairest way for you and your clients and everybody involved in this to, to go forward. So, I hate, keep bringing you back here. I'm sure you thought it was a simple question, but it really isn't.
That's fine, that's better than-
Okay. It's better than no, right?
Alternative, yes.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, with that in mind, thank you, gentlemen, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.
All right. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Second-hand dealer's license. We have the Onset Emporium.
Nobody here?
Okay, we have the Onset Emporium 255A, Onset Ave, Onset, Mass. License is granted under the town's bylaws, Division 2, Article 2, Section 1 through 3, and the applicable rules, regulations, and fees promulgated relative to the second-hand articles.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 400.
May I make one point of information, sir?
Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Ethier has been pursuing, making sure that everyone on the list has been licensed. There are four dealers who are in one location now, and so Mr. Ethier will be asking for a flea market, asking them to complete a flea market application-
Yep.
As opposed to four, one, okay, so-
Yeah, just as an update on enforcement, Mr. Ethier did visit eight places recently.
Right.
Handed them applications, said, "Get yourselves legal."
Right.
I followed up with a letter from the town saying that, "You've been visited by Mr. Ethier, you have the application, you need to get it in, otherwise enforcement will proceed." So, so that process is underway here. Let's see.
I just want to make one note for everybody. The conditions in all these licenses, I didn't bother to read it because it's the same, but just so the public, if they're listening, remembers, "No articles are to be stored or displayed or offered outside the described licensed premises, or on a sidewalk or public way unless the license expressly so provides." We've had issues with people throwing stuff outside all over the place, it is not allowed.
Yep.
Okay, next up.
It's in the application.
No, the application for historic commission.
Oh, yeah. Applic-, we have one, let's go back to that before we forget it. Appointment, reappointment interviews, we have one reappointment, Historic District Commission.
I have two here, actually.
Two, all right.
First one is Carolyn McMorrow, 13 Great Neck Road, PO Box 3068, Wareham, Mass. The undersigned selectman of Wareham had this, "They appointed you as a member to the Historic District Commission, term to expire no later than this June 30th, is 2020 or 2019?"
2020.
2020.
And do we have-
Yes, we have a letter of recommendation.
We have a letter of recommendation?
For-
Favorable?
Yes.
For this applicant, okay. Anything else, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 400.
Before we go to the next one, may I make some comments, sir?
Could I have your pen?
Regarding?
This commission?
I don't think we're going to talk about the commission generally because it's not on the agenda. We're here to do a reappointments, yes or no? If you want any board committee or commission to be on an agenda, we can do that, but I don't think it's wise to just do it ad hoc. We've run into issues in the past with that.
Okay.
We have another applicant for-
Next one is Nancy Miller, 6, I think it's Ripley Road, PO Box 279, Onset, Mass. Excuse me, the undersigned selectman of Wareham had this, "They appointed you to a member of the Historic District Commission, term to expire no later than June 30th, 2020."
Move to deny.
Is there a second on the motion to deny?
Second.
Seems this would entail some discussion. To discuss away.
Okay. Ms. Miller has been doing what she should be doing, which is taking care of her 90-plus-year-old mother who lives in Syracuse, New York. The commission has met, huh huh huh, one, two, three, four, five times in 2017, and she has attended those by remote participation with the possible exception of one. It's very difficult to see who attended what, where, and when, because there are no minutes on file for this commission.
Yeah, I think, I knew that Nan was in New York as well, and, you know, I mean, I don't have a problem with not, at this point, of not appointing her, but maybe she needs to come and just give us an explanation and talk to us about, you know, whether she's going to actually be here to be on this committee, or whether she's going to be in New York, you know what I mean? It was a problem for her when she was on the other committee, and of course, she, she got off the committee. She was on two others, I think, right? And she got them off them both. And, you know, I just, I just want to make sure that she's actually going to be on the committee and not just a remote participant.
Well, at this point, do you want to table the application until we can hear from her?
I'd prefer to do that and see, see if she could come in and give us some clarity.
Okay, then, could we have, if, if that's what the board would like to do, could we have you withdraw your second and Selectman Whitehead?
I'd be happy to withdraw my second.
Okay. Withdraw the original motion and replace it with a motion to table?
Yes, ma'am, yes, sir.
Second.
Okay. Can we have a motion to table?
Yeah, she just made it, I seconded it.
Okay. Motion to table by Selectman Whitehead, seconded by Selectman Tropiano, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, 400. This will allow the applicant the opportunity to get back to us and let her know what her intentions are.
Exactly.
So that we can proceed in good conscience, thank you. Okay, now we can get to town business. Vote on reduction bond for all-American assisted living facility.
We have that this week?
Our resident bondsman here, what does he have to say about it?
We have that this week?
Yeah, we have it. We have the paperwork here. This, I'm going to give you very quickly, because Mr. Whitehead's going to kill me if I talk too much tonight. Just a quick explanation of what happened here. The bond was put in place, I think it was $90,000. The bond actually ran out. The applicant, et cetera, knew the bond ran out, engineering firm, et cetera, let it lapse and was asking for a reduction of the bond. But in the meantime, the town had no protection. They came before the planning board, asking for the $7,500 piece, which Mr. Rowley, who acts as the consulting town engineer, basically went through, made a list of what was basically needed, and they agreed on a dollar amount that would cover what was left to go. I am probably going to be by myself on this, I just don't like it when someone doesn't follow the rules and basically lets a bond lapse, does not take care of it, which they're legally responsible for, and then comes back and says, "Okay, we're happy to do this, but we want it the new lower price." So, again, you can all vote as you want, but I just have an issue with how this was done.
Does that mean you're not going to-
Microphone.
Does that mean, I hear your explanation, I heard it the first time, you know, when the bond-
I have a, I have a personal problem with someone letting a bond lapse, you know, which is their legal requirement to make sure it does not lapse, knowing it lapses, and then coming back and asking for reduced number with the idea that there is no bond in place. It's just my own, it's just an improper way to do business.
How much is the bond?
The bond was 90,000, now it'll be 7,500.
So, it's a 10% bond, is that what it is?
Yeah.
So, it's not a cash bond?
Yeah.
Okay, and they're asking a reduction in how much bond they're allowed to, they need?
7,500.
They want to drop it to 75? They want to keep 75?
You want to drop it to 7,500 from 90,000?
Yes, because all that's left for Mr. Rowley's work is $7,500 to finish up what they have to do.
You know, typically, we don't do this, you usually wait till it's finished.
Yeah, this would have-
Yeah, let's just, let's-
This would have never come before us-
Yeah.
Except that at the planning board meeting, I reminded the board that it's a requirement of the board of selectmen to approve any bond change, reduction, et cetera.
Right.
Or else we would have never seen this.
You know, we've had a brutal history over the past 15 years with bonds in this town.
We typically want to make sure it's done before we release anything.
Done before we release.
It's a lot more incentive to release, you know, to want to get 90,000 released than 7,500.
Yeah, so I would, how about another motion to table until they come back with a completion?
Motion as suggested.
Actually, I think all we have to do is either vote to reduce or not.
Oh, I vote to deny the reduction.
Redo, yeah, I think we need to deny the reduction.
Okay, that's fine.
So-
I just did that.
Your second?
All right. Motion to deny the request for reduction by Selectman Whitehead, seconded by Selectman Tropiano, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 400. And the bond remains. Next up, vote on the confirmatory easement between Navionics and AD Makepeace Company. Is this something we might be able to say yes to tonight?
You know, once in a while, I can say yes. This, this is one which unfortunately, we really were-
It's a bad night.
Yeah, we were prepared-
Like the Republican Party, where the party of no tonight.
A ton of no's going around tonight.
This one here, actually, the reason we had to postpone it was that the attorney for the proponent had not filed paperwork with AD Makepeace and Navionics, because there's an easement required here, and it had to be filed through with the Registry of Deeds. I have the paperwork here showing that, basically, the registry of deeds, John Buckley has approved it, so I would say at this point here, if the board, so which is, I can make a motion if someone else can, to approve the easement.
That's your motion?
Second.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let me just give you the description where these are. A duly licensed mass company, basically 6 Thatchalane, AKA Thatchalane, Wareham, Mass. Consideration of a dollar for these, but it grants it to AD Makepeace, 158 Honet Road, with quick claim covenants, et cetera.
Okay, we have a motion by Selectman Whitehead, seconded by, opposed by Selectman Slavin, seconded by Selectman Whitehead, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 400. Yes.
Hey, we got a yes.
Now we have to sign.
This is not a meeting you wanted to be on tonight.
I didn't get to sign.
This board's rough tonight. Continue discussion regarding possible town, this is just going to be a floating, it's going to be on here every week, so if anybody has any brainstorms, we can have at it.
It's a little early.
I don't think it's a good idea tonight, because the answer's no to everything.
No town meeting.
No town meeting, it's just no.
No town meeting at all.
Just no. And the scary part is, if we don't do the warrant, there isn't one, believe it or not. The new people should throw us out of office, but nonetheless. So, is there anybody who has anything about town meeting warrant articles at this point, or do you want to come back to them?
Not yet.
No, just the list, Rich has the list ongoing, so.
Yep.
Pretty good.
And any other town business, not reasonably anticipated, 48 hours out?
Not for me.
Selectman Whitehead? Selectman Slavin? None for me. Let's see, we don't have a town administrator for a town administrator's report.
Oh.
Liaison reports we do have, what do you got?
Sure. The parking area between the multi-service, between the town hall and the middle school has been dug up and redesigned. The back of the town hall will have the four charging stations for the, what are they, electric cars. The plugins are there, but the pavement is not yet there. Between the town hall and the middle school, there will be an additional, I don't remember the number, of angled parking spots. The trees are gone. We're hoping that that will cut down on the gridlock at dismissal time for the schools, and the parking is for the town business. Expect that should be finished by the end of the week.
Yeah, they were in pretty good shape today with that.
Yep.
They had the grader in there, and they graded it out, it was looking good.
Okay, then. Liaising?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Went to a meeting of the Southeast Bike Path Alliance Group yesterday in Dartmouth. They got a grant to do what they call workshops in how to build a trail, you know, maintain, et cetera. Discussion went along very nicely. There's a possibility they may use some of the Wareham Land Trust existing trails to do these particular workshops, it could be anywhere else, too, but we'll see what happens. It's the first step with the grant process, which would help us in developing our, you know, bike path trail system. I guess there's a push now also for mountain bike type of trails as well, instead of the usual normal, what I call, street bike or asphalt bike, and it's also a push for people who actually run trails. So, we'll see how this all works out, but this looks like it's going to be a long-term grant process that will continue on, and it should help all the way from Fall River to Wareham. It's an overall pretty nice project. MLP meeting today, nothing really new affecting Wareham, couple of projects were moved around, changed. There was some interesting discussion on what they call Title VI, which is Civil Rights Act of 1964, having to do with race, color, national origin, and also Executive Order 12898, environmental justice for minority and low-income populations, Executive Order 13166, which is, they call, I love the abbreviation, LEP, I'd never figured this one out, limited English proficiency. That's a stretch.
For all of us.
For all of us, basically. You probably won't be able to see unless Bob really pulls in on it, but if you look at the map that shows Wareham, which is hard to see, in there is two colors. The first color, which covers most of Wareham, basically says that we have minority areas, which we all know about. But the lower area, which really runs around the coastline, which kind of surprised me, is low-income and minority. So, when we do things such as present, say, you know, warrant articles or else, I have to find out whether this involves town meeting, because of these rules and stuff, there may be, and the town council can explain, we might actually have to provide, basically, language accessibility to those who aren't proficient in English, as an example, or of minority issues, we, there's certain rules that we have to follow. So, SERPAD basically has announced this and said that they will be more than happy to assist any city or town in their area on these issues, but these issues have come up, and that basically is my notice, if we need help in this area, call Will at SERPAD, she will assist. I'll leave this to the town administrator, that's all I've got.
Okay.